Going to open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee Meeting for Thursday, August 11th. If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Introduction of members.
Joget Jarrett, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Joanne Watson, Blackstone.
Steve Tringalli, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Ellen Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Thank you. We're actually going to move the agenda items around and actually adjourn to executive session for reason of discussion of personnel, and then we will return to open session for the rest of the agenda. Do I just need a roll call vote? Joanne?
Yes.
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 Wendy?
Yes.
Erin, yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We're returning from our executive session, and we'll continue in order of the agenda. So we have our first public forum. Is anyone that would like to join us? Moving on to Consent Agenda A, we have warrants, minutes of meeting for July 18th. Do we not to ... so we're actually going to separate. So I'm looking for a motion for warrants, and then we should hold the minutes since we're going to have to amend them.
So moved on the warrants?
Okay, motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane. Any discussion for Consent Agenda A? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? And ... I think we need a motion to amend the minutes, or are we going to hold the table?
We're just going to do it after? Are we going to amend, or just ...
If you want to be both, the budget, the budget I do can skip out of the budget.
All right, so we'll table the minutes under Consent Agenda A right now.
Aye. We're not going to amend them, so we can approve them.
We're not going to amend them, we're just going to make the motion for the new budget, so we can approve it.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for July 18th.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill, second by Jane. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I am abstaining, because I was not here. And unanimous besides me. On to school committee discussion of subcommittees. We have a few listed here: Policies and Procedures, Negotiations, Capital Improvement and Facilities, Community Relations, Government, and Finance and Budget.
So can I just jump in?
Yes, please.
I had asked the superintendent to brainstorm anything that he thinks would be to the best of the benefit of the district on the subcommittees, and I think I sent out an email for everybody to be thinking about those subcommittees. So that's why you see this list here. I don't know, Ellen, do you want to talk a little bit about, just quickly, the goals of each of these, or what you were thinking when you listed these?
These five are represented in most of the districts and school committees. Policies and Procedures is really reflecting the school committee policy manual, which we do need to update. Negotiations, we do have Unit C, Support Staff Negotiations coming up this fall, so that still becomes an important subcommittee. We know that we have facilities issues, both at JFK and at the high school, and so the Capital Improvements and Facilities Subcommittee would start looking at MSBA and seeing how we can best move forward to renovate those schools. Community Relations and Government Updates, this tends to be just throughout the year, where school committee has forums with the public, with parents, with other groups or town boards as we go through the year, and certainly as there are things that are coming up, such as the referendum in the fall around charter schools. That's where I think this subcommittee could come up with a lot of good information. And then Finance and Budget, because this budget took a little longer, it's, we're going to start FY '18 in just a few months, and certainly we will, I'd like to approach it a little more open with everybody to start the process. So those are the five main ones that I see as the subcommittees that for the committee to consider.
If I can just jump in with the Policy and Procedures. I contacted MAS-C, and I talked to a man named Mike Gilbert, and I asked him how we go about changing the policy and updating our policy, and so he came up with two options for us to go with. The first option would be for us to create a small subcommittee, probably no more than two or three people, two, I think, would be plenty. And that's for us to go on to the MAS-C website, go through our policies and the current policies, and review the ones that we're not in compliance with. And then their website has changes made within five to eight years, so that would be our first one, and that one is free. The second one is to have MAS-C come out and work with the subcommittees and go through it together, go through the policies together, and review which ones are not in compliance. They will only provide us with advice, and in the end deliver one paper copy and one coded copy in NEPAN, and the cost for the district would be $10,500, split within three years. After one of those two things would be done, our district can have them upload our policy into what they call a Policy 21, which they would host the policy online and convert all of the manual over. When changes need to be made, they send you a reminder and say, you know, hey, you have to update this, and then we send them an email saying please do so, and they will revise the manual. The cost, the startup cost for that would be $3,500 for the first year, and that would cover, I believe, the startup costs in converting. And then each additional year after that would be $950 per year. So the cost upfront, I know $10,500 sounds like a lot of money, but it's actually split within three years, but it's still the same work as Option 1, it's just they have the knowledge behind, the knowledge behind that.
With the template, yeah.
So that's the policy, that's the, what Mike had told me on the phone. So that committee would actually be in charge of going through. Now, he just said that the last time our policy was changed, and I have that number, but he just sent it to me. I'll go over it in a minute, but I do have a copy of what he said on this, so if you want a copy, I'll give you a copy, just so that you have an idea of policy, because I know we talked a lot about updating the policy, but I finally said, okay, I'm going to call and see what this is all about, so this is what it's all about. So if there's any question on policy and working on the policy, he did say the one that's on our website is not from them, I think it's ours.
It is ours.
It's just thrown in. He asked...
And it's not everything.
Correct. So that is where we're at with the 1996. It was July 11th, July 11th, 1996 was the last time our policy was updated, so that's where we're at with the policy.
Right around the foundation budget, you know, 2003.
The other question I had, so that's the, that's A, that's the Subcommittee A, if anybody's interested. Negotiation, just, that's going to take, you know, if we were to look at time-consuming subcommittees, and do you have the time to put into these subcommittees? I would have to say that that's probably the most time-consuming, is the negotiations, and I'm sure those of you that were on negotiations this year can really speak to how time-consuming that can get. Capital Improvement, did you say that it's going, the focus is going to be on JFK and the high school?
Certainly the facilities renovations of those two buildings, but then also looking at capital improvements, whether they be technology, whether they be curriculum with new science standards. Many towns and regions do that. Capital improvement in very different ways, but...
I'm just trying to see...
The focus would be on renovating JFK and the high school.
So as a committee member, our focus for that, because some of the stuff is not really, is anything that we can do, but our focus for that would be communicating with the towns.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
What was it, Community Relations and Government Updates? Well, Government Updates is pretty much legislative updates. Bill, you've been doing that quite recently. Community Relations, I'm just wondering what you see that vision as?
I would think that that would be communicating with all groups, all stakeholders, whether it's parents, taxpayers, town boards, to let them know the work of the committee and upcoming issues and concerns, and celebrate the work that we've already done.
Okay. Sorry, Erin, I don't mean to take over, but I know I was...
You were already working on this.
...doing most of this. And I know this was brought up, I'm not quite sure who broke this up at the last meeting, but I did want to give a chance if anybody on the committee feels as though something else needs to be looked at, and I think maybe if we just take a breather and think about these committees, and then decide at our next meeting what would be the best, what would be the best personally for you to take on, knowing your roles as family members and things like that. So does anybody else have any committees that they think are important to move our district forward?
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead. Do you want to go first?
Well, I think we can't forget about the regional agreement. I mean, I know we reached a standstill, and I know we're not pushing the same plan we developed in, for the November town meetings, but I think this whole regional concept and the two towns, and you can put it under Community Relations if you want to, or whatever, but we've got some real decisive feelings in these communities, and we need to, and so whether you call it regional agreement, call it Community Relations, I'm not sure, but I think we just can't leave it out in left field.
And so what, just to get a clearer picture, what would the focus be for that particular subcommittee? Who do you see that going?
You know, I think, I think pulling together stakeholders again, and just, you know, where do we go from here?
And that's elementary again.
It's the whole kit and caboodle. It's the whole...
I have a, can I add on?
Yep.
So mine's a little more concrete in terms of...
Yours is separate.
Mine could be separate, I think. I'd like to, and I'll make a motion too if you want, I'm not doing that right now. I'd like to explore deregionalizing, having two separate Blackstone and Millville schools. And again, I'm not, I'm not, there are a lot of pros and cons to it, and I think, as a committee, I think we owe it to both communities to explore the pros and cons to it. And there's a lot, there's some pros, there's a lot of cons, but I do think we have to at least explore it. And I don't think it, I don't think it's a, my vision of it is that we just go and see what that process is. How do you deregionalize, and what would, what would the two communities look like? We might decide at that point to say, no way, it's just too, there's too many cons. But I think we have to at least explore it and see what the picture looks like, because the, the, the lack of equality, the lack of unreliability, I know I've been saying the same thing for months, but, you know, I don't think this committee can handle going through another budget process as it been like the last three years. And we have to think, and you might think that it's separating, but we're thinking of all the students in terms of how, how we move forward. Now, if it was decided that we're, yeah, let's move forward deregionalizing, it takes years to do it, okay? So it's not something that's going to happen next September, but I think at least this committee owes it to explore what the picture would look like, and then make a decision on how it proceeds. So I don't know if it's a subcommittee, or what it would be called, I just think it's something that we should look at to bring back to this committee and say, hmm, that's what that picture looks like.
I think that's going to require a lot of research, so it might be just a one person to, you know, but just, I think, that's definitely two committees, I think I see.
But I think where we ran into some issues in the past is that we started with, with a group of school committee people, and then we tried to pull in community people and teachers and whatever. I think we've got to start with, with stakeholders, and you may, you may get some, you may not get any. But I think if there are a core group of stakeholders who really have a passion, one way or the other, deregionalizing, regionalizing, completely regionalizing, keeping exactly what we've got, that group of people, not necessarily even all school committee people, that group of people needs to hash things out, do the research, do the, get the process down, but it needs, it needs more voices than just the voices at the table.
So what I'm hearing is that Jane talked about keeping the regional agreement moving forward, in whatever, whatever way it moves forward, and exploring deregionalizing, and it sounds like those two things that go together is just researching of the process of regionalizing. And whether it's deregionalizing or regionalizing, it's a process. So this, these two committees, sounds like it's going to be very research, rich in research first, and then forward after that, so we can keep it as one?
It might just stop after that.
Right.
It might just stop after that, and say, you know what, it's too long of a process, it's, it's too many cons.
We got what we got.
There's, you know, and maybe there's other things that come out of it, you know, that, you know, pull in a third town, I don't know, you know?
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand that when I put these together. Does anybody else have any others? Joget?
Maybe school safety?
Okay. And what do you see the vision for that?
I said we need to do that.
Or what do you see coming out of that, school safety?
I thought we were supposed to get an officer.
And we, we, yeah, we talked about building, building safety, building something or other. It's gone.
Safety. It was safety.
Safety and security type thing.
That's a good idea, because, you know, at district admin, we have all kinds of drills and things like that, we have regular meetings, and we have virtually nothing here, so it's a good idea, very good idea.
My only concern is creating a subcommittee, what would that subcommittee look like under safety, because it would be tricky with...
We talked... That might go with policy, the way we spoke about it at...
Well, we talked about having representatives from the different units in the administration...
But it would be more school-based, not stakeholder-based, correct?
Right, correct.
I just want to make sure that that's, okay.
And it would be policy-based.
Maybe even a little community relations and government, I mean, working with the local safety, fire, police departments.
So, so school safety, and that, that'll work in cooperation with the policy, when we look at the policy, so that'll be good. Are there any other ones? I really suggested really looking at the complex, and I know that can go under capital improvements and facilities, but I just think it's important to work with the selectmen, and really work together on just our building maintenance, and our, you know, facility in general, not only our facility, but our grounds, and really come down to a agreement on who's taking care of the this and that, and I think just working with the town, the selectmen in town to come to an agreement, because we've just had a really nice basketball court put up. But my concern, as I drive by it every day, is I wonder who's going to upkeep that if we don't upkeep the playground, and we don't upkeep the 300...
We don't even know who does it.
We don't know. So although it looks great right now, my worry is that, you know, in 10 years, it's going to look like, you know, the plate, the hardtop in front of the JFK, so I think we could really make gains on that.
Field's going to look good, because they have their own well.
Right, but I just think, I think having a conversation and working one-on-one with the selectmen might get us, you know, in a better place on who's going to care for that.
Was there anything that came about from the, I remember when the, all the well, that the sprinkler system came up, did we reword the lease agreement on terms of any clarity on that? When was that, last year?
That was this year. That was, yeah, I know it was.
That's why.
It was definitely this year.
September.
Basketball. Yes, correct.
I don't remember seeing a final...
Did we get any clarity after that?
Did they dig the well?
Yeah, it's in.
It's in, it's green grass over there.
But again, that's one of those things that we need to really have a conversation with, and I only can speak for Blackstone, but I, I mean, I would be willing to sit with the selectmen in town and say, okay, we need to get this done, because I drive by our facility every day, and I love that hardtop, but man, that playground gets so much use, and the hardtop gets so much use, that my worry is who's upkeeping all of this, and is it the school? We've had this conversation so many times, that I think if we work in cooperation with, you know, one person that communicates through the town...
I think you're right, the town, the poxen wreck, us, the selectmen, just to have some kind of collaborative dialogue around, this is what we do.
Because the ball fields, the soccer fields, and new basketball, look beautiful, but there's like holes six feet deep in the parking lot under the school that are puddling, the kids can't play out there, and...
Right. I just think it's, it's worth a conversation, and I know that's, that's Blackstone-driven, but I just think it's important to, we always, our conversations, whether it's budgetary or regionalizing, it's always the complex, the complex, so we really need to focus on, on the complex, I mean, and where we're going with that right now. But that's, I mean, that can go under, I guess, Capital Improvement and Facilities.
I have no problem doing the research on the deregionalizing and reporting back in like, maybe the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Is that doable?
I'll write up all of the things and then get it back, and what I'm thinking is maybe just a little survey monkey on what you might be interested in, and what we're not interested in, because we do have a lot, but I also think, based on, you know, the time of the superintendent, that we need to make sure that these committees are focused, we're driving the focus, and that we give the superintendent time to do, you know, things like his evaluation and things like that. So I think moving forward, just process that, and then at the next meeting, maybe I'll send out a survey monkey on what you're interested in. Does that sound good? Does anybody else have any questions on that?
Sounds good.
Thank you very much, Wendy.
Sorry.
That's okay. Glad you got that done. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
No. Superintendent Evaluation.
Oh, sorry. Totally missed that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vinoco.
Actually, I'm going to start that for you, hold on. We're just going to make this very quick and easy for you, so I say I'm going to. I think what I'll do is I will just...
While you're getting ready, can I just jump in on something?
Sure.
The paper that I passed out on the policy...
Has things on the back.
Has things on the back. And I was asked about a timeline, and to create a timeline for the evaluation next year, and so here's the timeline that was put forth by the DESE, and it just moves us through the timeline of what's expected through this process, and so what I did is I went through the meeting minutes, and I kind of put together the meeting dates that we have, and what our role is as a committee, and what we need to make sure that we're following protocol. I did notice a few different things that might be good to implement in the process for next year, and I put those on asterisks on the side. I'll apologize for my spelling ahead of time, because this took me a long time, but it's just a process, so that everybody has that process and can look at it throughout the whole year, and you see that we're all expect, the expectation is there, and we're setting it in August.
This is next year, though.
This is next year, yeah. Nope, that, actually, this is the same as this year, because I have, we did the same thing this year, so I really just cut and pasted the same, you know, that was September 6th last year, this was September 21st. So it mimics last year's process, so we actually are at the same time that we did do this last year. The only two differences is we were behind on the mid-cycle review, and we didn't get the evidence and process for that mid-cycle review. So I think just sticking to that timeline and having it, knowing when it's coming, I think is beneficial. The other thing that I think would be beneficial is the, it was suggested when I was doing the research, that the goals artifacts and the artifacts of evidence should be discussed prior to this, when we set the goals, we ask, what does that look like, and what are we expecting?
What do we expect to see?
What do we expect to see? And I think that that would be something that it would put the same lens, we all have the same lens at the, looking at the artifacts of evidence. So I think those two asterisks are important to have, but everything else, we actually followed the same protocol last year. I just wanted to make sure it was on one document, and that we all receive it in August, so we see moving forward that...
So how does it link? So, and, so we're going to finish after today, we're going to have the survey monkey to do this year's.
Yep, the evaluation is done. Jane and I worked together, and we, we worked together to come up with one, so he's going to present his evidence today. Erin's going to walk through each standard, just talk, say the standards, so that people at home understand it. He's going to present his evidence, and then we're going to move on, and by our next meeting, which is September 8th, we're going to review the self, well, we're reviewing the self-assessment today too, but cycle one, and to talk about the data, I mean, the goals of the district, and what we're hoping is in September 8th.
How does it link to, if there are areas in this assessment that we're doing, this evaluation that we're doing, those would be areas that this committee would want a focus to the next one, so how...
Correct. So at our next meeting, that's the discussion, is the superintendent evaluation.
We'll have it done.
It will be done. It will be aggregated. Hopefully I can get that aggregated for everybody, and we'll discuss it, and then we'll say, okay, moving from here, it should be based on the superintendent evaluations, it should be based on the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans. So we have to look at all of those, it's kind of a lengthy process, and it also says on the DESE website, you might want to set up a subcommittee for that, so that the time, this is very time-consuming to do. We did do it last year, we did, we did come up with goals, and I'll send an email out for that, but it does look at all of that and say, okay, where do we go from here, what were the strengths, what were the areas of improvement, and we need to keep it moving forward. So that's how it's going to mesh for the next meeting, is to review the evaluation and look at that, that cycle step one, which the definition is right there on what, where, where to do with the superintendent.
But in reality, it's going to feel very rushed this time, because we are behind, but next year, if we stick to this timeline, we'll be finishing up June and coming back September with the goals for, we'll have more time.
I think, we did this last year, and we, it's the same time, it's the same time, and the only difference is it took longer to tweak the superintendent goals and the district improvement goals. So we only approved, we only got through that tweaking in November, and I think if we set up just one or two people to tweak those on the side, and it's done, and we come in, it's, it'll be done a lot sooner than November. So I think that's where we lost the speed last time, but...
Part of, part of the setting the goals, I'm just, I'm just, it's getting clear that it's that, it's the transfer over from this year to next year, so if there are areas in this eval that we want to continue on...
Correct.
That can be part of it, but we also have to give, I think, the superintendent part of it, of goals that he wants to continue to work on as well.
He does that first.
Okay.
He does that first. He presents it to us, and then, and he can present it to us, and then we can set up that subcommittee, and we can share what we feel. And then after he presents his, and we present ours, we try to mesh those together. It has to be a, it has to be a co-op...
Mutually, yeah.
That's correct. But we also have...
Mutually, but it's the, but it's the school committee's responsibility.
That's correct.
Final say.
That's correct, and it's also the schools, the school committee's responsibility to follow the timeline and make sure that we have the information aggregated, the evidence, everything is, that is on the school committee's responsibility, but yes, you're right, it is the final say of the school committee, if there is a disagreement, which last year I think we moved along nicely, there's just a couple of things I think would, would make it a little smoother.
Do you want to add, so you want to add another subcommittee?
Uh-huh.
It's on?
Anybody want to be on that subcommittee?
On, what are we talking about?
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
Oh, on that, yeah, you're right.
That's what I'm saying, you want to take one away.
No, you're right.
Don't add one.
No.
Take one away, and...
Okay, thanks, I didn't add that.
Take Community Relations away, and just let the superintendent do that by spire.
I actually already took that away. I already took that away. Thank you for that.
Okay, so...
Sorry, Erin.
Standard one was Instructional Leadership. Overall rating for the standard?
The overall rating is that?
Yeah, and...
And that's what it says.
Alan, do you want me to?
I'm sorry, Erin, can you just say what that is again?
Instructional Leadership.
No, no, is this his self-eval?
Yes.
Oh.
This is Alan's self-evaluation, sorry. "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling." And Alan rated himself as needs improvement, so if you would like to present your evidence for this standard at this time, that you have four, Instructional Leadership.
Part of this year's issues were the timing that it took outside of ability being in the classrooms, and with all that was going on with regional agreement, health insurance renewal, and our Unit A negotiations, and the budget, so as you go through the packet, there's a professional practice and student learning, then the...
Fourth page.
Down into the district improvement plan, which is part of the evidence for standard Down into the district improvement plan, which is part of the evidence for standard one, and that's really what we have in...
Oh, they're in order here.
Yes. It started with professional practice goal, then student learning goal, then district-wide goals, and then standards one, two, three, four. So what you, what you have on top after the self-assessment and the self, the evaluation is then you have the performance goals, the professional practice, student learning, and district improvement goals, one, two, three, and then...
So standard one, instructional leadership, is the district improvement plan, did everyone play that in their packet?
Are we supposed to have the indicators, though, that says, that talks about how this came to fruition? The district improvement, so continue to implement the evalu, educator evaluation system, so what did that look like in terms of artifact? I know we have the district improvement plan, but it was, what's, what's the outcome of this? Like, for instance, did we align the map, the curriculum map, to standards and frameworks? Did we train all staff on X2? Did we assemble, can we go through that?
Can go through that, yes. So, goal one was to increase student achievement through the curriculum improvements, and we have all curriculum maps completed, and uploaded.
Is that just middle school, or is that...
No, that's, that's...
That's across the...
It is just standards and timelines, so it's scope and sequence.
Scope and sequence. So we have done that, again, the leadership team has worked very hard to do this, so we do have that scope and sequence across all of our standards and frameworks.
So is there, can we go on the website and look at that information?
It's not, it's not completed yet, so it's not web-based yet. If we could go into X2 and take a grade and look at them.
Train all staff on X2? Yes, no?
Yes, that was done.
We have all staff done. Unfortunately, Edwin went away, so that is no longer a part of the, which is why we trained in X2.
Okay, assemble building data teams to analyze information, what data teams were assembled or, or...
See, this is just something I, like, the data teams, I'm sure they have a lot of work that went into that, that they sat together, they worked together. I feel like that should be something that we have in front of us, to be able, like, see as a...
Artifact.
As a...
Evidence.
Well, evidence, but that, so that just shows us the work that was done.
Right.
I, I feel like there should be...
So is the expectation that he provides a binder?
Yeah.
That's not my expectation, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
But certainly going...
I think, I think, I think it's the expectation, based on the DESE, that the artifacts and the evidence has to have, you have to have some sample, some sample.
Well, and, and I, and I reviewed what's on their website, I reviewed what you sent us, and I, and, you know, I think we, I think, and you've made it very clear in the statement that you set out, we have to say what we're expecting in this evidence.
Right, absolutely.
Because some of this evidence we've gotten when the leadership team comes to talk, I mean, some of this evidence we've gotten over the course of the year.
Correct.
So I don't expect a replication...
Correct.
Of data and information that we've already gotten.
Correct.
And I think there's some responsibility on our part to keep data and information as it comes to us, keep, you know, we get packets like this, and it has a lot of this evidence that, that we're talking about throughout the course of the year.
Correct.
So perhaps, in the future, we need to say, you know, this, I'm presenting this to you as a, you know, because this addresses our student learning, or this addresses our, whatever.
Right, I just wanna make sure it's not missed.
Pardon?
I just wanna make sure it's not missed, so if there's something there that, that, yes, we have it, and it's online, you can go online and look at it.
Right, right.
I think it's our, it's our fiduciary role or, or job to go on and look at it, so I, I agree with you, and that's why I made that statement.
But I don't expect, I don't expect it to be duplicated and handed to us in a, in a binder, I really don't.
But I do think that's, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is what the teachers have to do, they have to hand in their...
But this isn't a teacher evaluation, this is a superintendent evaluation.
No, it is superintendent, but, so, for me, not being, we're not with him every day, we're not, we're together maybe twice a month, and then I have to sit down, he did his self-evaluation, and I'm sure we collected a lot of, of time and energy and things that he's done for the year. For me, I need to sit down and do his evaluation, as we're all going to do, and do the same thing, so to have it at my fingertips, instead of me saying, wait a minute, wasn't that an October meeting, when he, you know, it, it kind of, it, it just comes together to be able to do this in a timely manner for, you know, to do it the right way, that's, I, I think...
Well, I think moving forward, then, we have a digital portfolio, and he just moves stuff in there, and we have access to. We have a digital portfolio, all the stuff we get throughout the year, because I certainly don't expect him to come with a binder, saying, under the community engagement, here's the attendance of the superintendent's suppers that I had all year. I know he did them, you know what I mean? So I don't, I don't need that, I don't need that, under that standard. So why would I need it under, under this standard? I, I think there's a little bit of micromanagement going on here.
I disagree with you.
And I, listen, I think we need data, okay, but what Jane said was, we get data all year.
Right, but...
And if we have to do a digital portfolio, I'm for that, but I'm not for micromanaging now, saying, where's the measurable evidence right now, because I don't see it here, I'm not for that.
But to back this up, to back up the district improvement plan bill...
We sit here all year, we sit here all year, there has to be some trust, there has to be some trust that the leadership does this throughout the year.
Yes, and they put a lot of time and energy into the bill.
They don't go and micromanage teachers and principals like this.
I think you need to stop saying "micromanage," because that's a heavy word.
I say anything I want, because I have just as much here as anywhere else.
Okay, I'm gonna take the table back for a minute. With all due respect to the superintendent, all of the teachers, and the assistant superintendent, everyone that has put the work into this, it deserves to be displayed, that's what I'm saying, that, it doesn't, I'm not saying it has to be in a binder, and it, but there is a, this goes to credit of a lot of people, and a lot of time and a lot of energy.
All I'm saying is, it happens all year, Aaron.
Exactly.
It happens all year. When kids come and produce, all those things that we do with the crayon book, and all those things, that's all data, and, and I don't expect Alan to put that on a check sheet for me, that's all.
But it's not micromanaging, we, it is our responsibility as a committee to evaluate the superintendent.
In entirety, in entirety, not just the chair and the vice chair.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And that's why we're all sitting here together.
And as the vice chair, I expect artifacts. So you may not, but I expect artifacts.
Right, and as the vice, and as the vice chair, as the vice chair, it's the majority of this committee, okay, that makes those decisions, not the vice chair or the chair.
Nobody's making decisions right now, Bill.
You just said you wanted artifacts.
No, and, and, and you said you didn't.
And she has the right to request those.
And you said you didn't. You said you don't expect a binder, I say I expect artifacts. End of conversation. Your opinion, my opinion, we're not making decisions.
We can do a vote. Can we let Alan talk? Let Alan, Alan's good on this side.
Actually, we're gonna move on to...
Majority vote, too, so don't take that away.
To number two, we're going to move on to the standard two, management and operations. "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling." Alan has rated himself as proficient, and if you would like to just guide us where the evidence is for...
I included a letter that I had sent to like, Fatman, Senator Fatman, with evidence there, and I wanna just backtrack one second. Everybody happens to be right, data and artifacts. This year, I did not, was not able, did not compile data and artifacts as we move through the year. I spent a lot of the year with every single one of you on all of these subcommittees, and so going forward, starting on that September 8th meeting, once we decide what we are looking for, then we will provide them, whether it's in digital format, whether it's hard copy, throughout the year, so that the subcommittee that's evaluating me and with the committee's guidance, we will have that.
Okay.
We do not have that in the detail this year, and, and, and that's just the way it ended up this year. And, and so my apologies to the committee for not having that depth and breadth of detail, we do, we have spent a lot of time together, we do, we can point to some of the things that we have done, but it's not, it's not gonna match up exactly.
Okay, so you have a letter to Senator Fatman for evidence of management and operations. Is there anything else you wanna add to standard two?
I just think that we've had a year that was a lot of transition, we, we've had a new special ed director, a new business manager, and along with everything else that went on this year, it was a very challenging year. And, you know, it's, it's good work, it's hard work, but it's good work, and we are moving in the right direction.
Okay, and standard three, we had family and community, and "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools." And Alan has rated himself as proficient.
I've spent a lot of time, I included the supper with the super program that we did, meeting with everybody, I have made sure that I've been available to faculty meetings throughout the year to give updates on the budget, on the curriculum, on the technology. We have met with boards over and over in both towns, we had 75 nights out, and all of you were at most of those in one form or another, and we have, we have reached out to families, we do get calls, we return the calls, we meet with parents who have concerns, and so I do believe that we have...
Met that goal, for sure, okay. And standard four is professional culture. "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff." Alan has rated himself as proficient.
At, at the very back of your packet, you have the, the presentation that I made on opening day, I'm looking forward to August 30th in a couple of weeks. We have worked very hard to make sure that all staff feel valued and feel that they contribute to all of our students' learning, both in and out of the classroom. During Teacher Appreciation Week, we had breakfast with a building, and met with every, every staff member. I have worked hard to support the National School Breakfast Week, and the subsequent art contests, and was able to cook again for a couple of our classes, and again, with professional culture from time to time, letters do go home from me to staff, and you have a copy of that from the opening of last year, and communication and accessibility for all staff, and so that they feel that they are treated properly is, is what we have worked very hard to do.
And I just wanna make one correction, that you said had breakfast with, you actually made breakfast.
I did make breakfast.
For the staff, just to be clear on, on that, he was the chef, so. Do you wanna go through your summary here, or did, is this, you already did this last?
Well, I certainly can.
Or is there anything else you wanna add, I guess, is my question?
I think, it's the self-assessment that I included in those top sheets, in the summary, I also represent the district in many different levels and meetings, from the Blackstone Valley Superintendent's Roundtable, to the Worcester County Superintendent's Association, I sit on the Bye County Collaborative Board, and that has paid, literally paid us dividends with our increased rental of space to Bye County. I attend the statewide superintendent's meetings and the professional development, I feel that, I do advocate for us at the state level, and make sure that our accomplishments are heard. We certainly are always looking at best practices to see what we can incorporate to improve our delivery to all students. I believe if the committee, and I'm sure you do hear from administration, from members of the leadership team, for the input and how they feel we are doing, if you ask parents, and community members for their feedback, I believe that they would say that we are accessible, I believe that they would say that they are welcomed into the district, and can ask the easy questions as well as the hard questions, excuse me, and that we are moving in the right direction. It has not been an easy year, but we have much to be proud of here at BM RSD, and we do tremendous things, both in terms of our staff as well as our students, and we will continue to work for the very best for each one of our kids.
Perfect. Anyone have any other questions for Alan, or, and we are moving into our, our part of the survey monkey, which I heard was already ready.
I have a question that maybe is a motion, if someone wants to second it for discussion. I'd like it, if, and I'll make a motion if, if someone would second it, that when we all do the evaluation, that we all sign it. Last year, only two people signed it.
You mean when we take the survey ourselves, put our name on it?
Write the survey and survey monkey, you sign it, so...
Make an emotion for that?
I am making a motion.
I'll second that.
What, what's the purpose of that?
The purpose is, if we're asking Alan for tons of detail and whatnot, we can have the detail of the, when we submit the evaluation, to sign it, so he knows where that feedback's coming from. That's also part of our expectation and job responsibility.
Well, we've been here, how long have we been here? Are we in discussion, are we in discussion?
Karen, discussion.
So, motion was made by Bill that the evaluation will be done and signed individually by each member, and it was seconded by Steve, is that your motion?
Not the evaluation at the, in the end, the aggregate, I'm talking about when we fill out our individual evaluations, that we sign it. Last year, only two people did.
Okay, so the motion's on the table, Steve is second, seconding that motion. So I think we should discuss that before we vote on it. My question is, is the copy Alan gets, is just the aggregated, aggregated version, so what will that purpose serve?
It's nothing to do with Alan, has that...
No, so what, so what is the purpose of that?
Has everything to do with us.
It's our, us being able to give our honest opinion.
If we're filling out an evaluation, we should sign it, we should sign it.
Yeah.
If you're giving an honest opinion and feedback, like we should be, you should sign it, period.
Well, that's, that's also saying, we should comment, if we're, if we are giving exemplary or proficient, then we comment why we're giving it.
Absolutely.
Well, the aggregated copy is gonna go to Alan.
Yeah.
So he's not going to see who made comments.
Isn't, isn't our, isn't our evaluation public record?
Something we wanna say, why don't we just say...
Well, that, that's, that's the reason why I say, there's nothing, I wouldn't put in the evaluation, it wouldn't say it was...
I know, so...
I have no problem putting my name on anything.
Yeah, no, me neither. Well, I don't know, when we, when we first started, it was, it was A, B, C, and D, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. So I don't remember ever putting, I mean, I put, I can put my name, I don't have a problem putting my name on anything and writing comments, but I don't think I'm speaking, I, I'm not speaking for everybody, and if that's somebody's personal option to not do it, then why are we micromanaging the survey monkey? Because then we can say, okay, well, everybody needs a comment, everybody needs to put their name, everybody needs to do A, B, C, and D, and that's, that's to somebody's prerogative.
Everybody can write down whatever they want, just sign it. I don't care if you don't write any comments, but you gotta sign it.
Well, I, I think there should be a comment.
You should sign it and say, no comments, and we say, okay, that person has no comments, fine, no, whatever, just sign it.
All right, so back to Wendy's question, is what is the purpose of that, for the unaggregated version?
Listen, I made a motion, we're discussing it.
Yeah, I know, so...
I've, I've made my, I'm not taking questions on it, I think everyone should sign it.
But we're discussing it.
Well, it's discussion, it is discussion.
Steve signed it last year, that, everyone should sign it. Just so there's a level of accountability, you know, you can't say, well, you know, failed. Well, why, how, you know, so if he has a problem, you know, Steve, I know she put me low in that category, why? Is this something I can help you with next year? It's, it's more just accountability and, and follow-through on our end. Again, I, I wouldn't, wouldn't write anything, I wouldn't say...
So you do want those copies to go to him, and that's my, I guess that would be my question, because he's, if, I believe I was under the...
The teachers get them, the teachers get signed, it's signed by the teachers, it's signed by their principals, Alan signs his to the principals, that's all.
Let's vote.
Alan should get everything.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, I guess.
Two nays, passes.
Two to... And any other discussion for superintendent evaluation?
So I'll make sure that that goes up, the survey monkey, it goes up, and I will take off the optional star, so it has to be filled in before you submit it, and I will hope to get that up tomorrow.
Have we decided who's aggregating those?
It doesn't matter to me, I don't mind, just, all you do is hit a button, really. I, I aggregated it last year, and I put it in a table forum, and that's what was presented.
Bill, would you like to aggregate those?
Survey monkey aggregates it, you know, there's nothing to aggregate, it puts it all together.
I don't mind doing it.
I have last years right here, if you want it, it just aggregates it.
I actually typed up the whole thing last year, just FYI.
The, the survey monkey right here is.
The table.
Individual comments, then the aggregate.
But the final assessment was done by myself.
All right, moving on, report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco, for the building updates for the summer. At Millville Elementary, we have installed new carpet in the main office as well as into the entryways. These carpets are frayed and dangerous to the safety of all parties. The insurance review that we must go through brought those to our attention, so they have been just completed, and it is going to be paid for from the BICO rental income, not from the general fund budget. At the middle school, we've had an ongoing air quality issue here, and it was because, it was due to the original engineering where the vent stack wasn't high enough to clear the roofline. And so many days, the, the air quality was poor, as it was pushed back into the building. So we have increased the stack, so it, the air clears the, the roofline now, and that was paid for out of our maintenance budget. The sign looks terrific at the bottom of the driveway, and that was done through MASP and at the parent association, and thanks to Mr. Cameron for coordinating that.
Through the middle school PTO.
Middle school PTO, I'm sorry.
Are they putting that in there?
That was very nice.
Okay.
They were floating around it.
Yes, middle school PTO.
It looks nice.
At the high school, Mr. Duda came to me with the NIASC report, and that mentioned that we needed to move guidance back where it is in every high school in America, which is right next to the central office, to the main office. So that we did that to address the NIASC findings. Dr. Thompson, Mrs. Braverman moved back down to the former guidance location above the LMC, and they have much bigger, better offices than I do, so I'm not quite sure how that worked out.
Sorry, who moved on it? Who moved it?
The Dave and Tina.
The assistant superintendent, not the curriculum, the assistant superintendent.
Yes, and special ed. We did also replace the carpet in the main office, which is a continuation of the work that we have done the last couple of, a year and a half, to make those floors safe, and so we have a much cleaner-looking and safe main office. And again, that is going to be paid for from the BICO rental income at the high school. As you walk through our schools, you will see that the custodial staff has simply worked their magic. I don't know how else to say it. The buildings look terrific, and they have worked around their own vacation schedules and have made sure that the buildings are rehabilitated to a very, very high level. And we get that from vendors, we get that from visitors, we get that from everybody who comes to our schools, that they do look terrific. So we are in good shape and ready to go for school, starting in, in just a few short weeks, August thirty-first. Also, next is the personnel update. We have had a tremendous number of personnel changes. Retirements continue to lengthen, as well as the resignations, and so we are keeping very busy addressing all of those to make sure that we place the very best people we can in front of our students and to support them. So I just wanted to give that, and I will continue to update this list as we go through the next couple of weeks. The, the FY seventeen budget, which is a ongoing hobby of mine, is going to be officially become the budget on September first. I checked with the Department of Education this morning and mentioned that we did have one small addition to the budget line, top line, which was our additional Chapter Seventy money. The net result is that it's, the state giveth and the state taketh away, we did get a, a small increase in Chapter Seventy, sixty-one thousand eight forty-five, so we just need to add that into the top line, and I would just ask the committee to, just to correct the number. It does not change our town's assessments and those we have ready to go out to the towns. Since the law allows for a, either a district-wide town meeting or an additional town meeting to support the adopted budget, since we have done neither of those forty-five days from July eighteenth, the budget does become accepted by all. So the twenty-one million nine hundred and fifty-five, six thirty-five number that was approved just needs to be amended to include that additional Chapter Seventy money that was tucked in at the very last minute from the state. So it brings our, our operating money to twenty-two million seventeen thousand four eighty, and again, that only for housekeeping, to make sure we reflect that additional state funding. But the assessments to the towns have been finalized by the, by the actions of the, of the towns. So I would just ask the committee to simply amend that number twenty-one nine fifty-five, six thirty-five, to reflect the additional sixty-one thousand eight forty-five in Chapter Seventy, so that the top line number increases to twenty-two million seventeen.
So moved.
Or eighty.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Bill and second by Wendy. Any discussion?
Do we need to go through all of this, or no?
No, because that would be recertification.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything else.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And one last item I have is the, the substance abuse education and prevention policy, which was passed in the spring. I just included the legal alert from NASC and Steve Finnegan, so that we, and I also included in the back a representative policy on, that addresses the pieces of the opioid law, and we will have that for adoption on September eighth, and then the law tells us that we must then put it up on our website, and that parents and students will be notified of the appropriate changes to that policy.
Have it come up twice, Aaron? Is that one of those policies that has to hear more than once?
We have to have two readings?
Or you can waive the reading and just adopt it, you can do that.
So that'll be on the next one, too?
Yes, September eighth. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. And report of assistant superintendent?
Yes, in your packet, and I did email it out yesterday as well, is a, is a memo from me asking for an adoption of a middle school textbook program. This spring, we piloted two programs to follow the Envisions program that we adopted last year at the elementary schools for the middle school, starting in sixth grade next year. We piloted Envisions, their new middle school program, and Big Ideas Math, which is a private company out of Pennsylvania, but distributed by Houghton Mifflin. Districts in the area have used both of these with success. The teachers liked the Big Ideas Math program better, thought it was a better transition to high school mathematics. The other advantage of the Big Ideas Math program is that it has an advanced tract. We probably will not be rolling that out first time by, but that can start in seventh grade as well. So instead of just having advanced algebra in eighth grade, there'll be advanced math starting earlier at the middle school. So I'm asking that the committee adopt the, the new textbook series, and we would start purchasing textbooks for sixth grade next year, and then books for seventh grade, so we'll be rolling it in, and then eighth grade, there it is, the Big Ideas Math program.
So it's the Big Ideas, not the Envisions?
Not the Envisions, yes. But there's several districts that, who have used that and had great success in the past. I mean, I.
So when you say next year, that'd be fall of seventeen?
No, that's.
This, this couple of weeks.
Fall of sixteen, yes.
So essentially, the incoming sixth-grade class doesn't lose the momentum that they gained by the Envisions.
Right, it doesn't make sense to have fifth graders start, you know, a, a math program that reflects the new math standards, to then go back to old materials and, and old ways.
Go back again the next year.
So this will continue that momentum. You know, people have asked, well, why don't we just do it across the board, because a little too, middle school's a little too important, and there's too much stuff to jump in, it's a very deep school.
Yeah, I like the idea of the rolling with this, the fifth-grade class that we did it to last year. My only question, I'm just going to play devil's advocate, is last year, a lot of the feedback was, it was, it was so many programs that they had already been through, so now with them not choosing Envisions for sixth grade.
Hmm.
Are we going to expect any?
No, they're both, they're both Common Core programs that have the same approach.
It's not a new standard.
Right.
It's not a new learning process of what they've already relearned.
No, no, I mean, it, it's going to be more middle school and less elementary-esque, but it is the same.
Is it still the online?
I believe it does, yes.
Because that was huge for, I think.
Yeah, it does.
For my fifth grader, I mean, I.
Yeah, no, because, because this, this generation is visual learners. But, see, what people don't understand about the quote-unquote Common Core math is that it is not just a set of standards, it's an approach to teaching the, the mathematics that is research-based and gives results. So that, that continues. Both of these programs continue the work that was done.
So you need a motion for the purchase, or the?
To, to adopt the program.
Adopt the program.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion, thank you, Jane. Motion made by Jane to adopt the new middle school math.
Big Idea, whatever, whatever.
Big Ideas and Middle School. And seconded by Wendy. And any other discussion?
Yeah, can you just talk about, like, the timeline for implementation and the PD? When and where is that coming in?
We're still in negotiations with that, again, unfortunately, because of the, the budget carousel. Normally, this would have been brought to you folks in, in June, and we would already have PD set up and organized, but we are in discussions to do that. I'm hoping to do it in early September. The advantage that we have in middle schools, you have people who have majored in mathematics, they've already received training in both of these programs last year, and there's only six of them. So it's a smaller hill to climb over.
So on Steve's question, so there's, shouldn't be a big learning curve to teach the math, what they've already been teaching?
Yeah, everyone, and they, unlike with the elementary, where you had a teacher in each school do it, and for not, everybody here has piloted both programs, so.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, have it.
Can I ask a quick question? With Osiris leaving, how does that affect, are we doing online MCAS, and, and are we required in spring of seventeen to do online?
Uh, no, I, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the commissioner's expectation was seven, eight, it was nineteen for everybody being online.
Okay. So we'll just stay the course, what we're doing?
Yeah, well, we'll, we, what, you know, MCAS, you know, the new MCAS will be here this spring.
Yeah.
That is on track. It will be.
Paper or online?
Paper, it will, we will have to do paper. We do not have, we do not have the machines to do online testing. It is, it is a virtual impossibility, there's not enough machines to meet the number of kids, because we have not been able to make the gains in technology. So, we do have a network now that will support it, thanks to the work of Osiris, but we don't have the actual.
Can they do it on Chromebooks, or no?
Yeah, yes, they can. Yes, you can. But you got to have Chromebooks to do them on.
Someone call on Alan.
Call on Alan, does hand up.
Just a quick point to that, the state has just released fifty million dollars to be available for technology, so we will go after our fair share of that.
Yep.
That is just released.
What, what's the update on the Chromebooks? What grades are getting them?
That's, thanks to the strong work of Mrs. Cobb, little money left over from last year, and this year's money, we are going to go one-to-one in grades eight to nine.
Eight, nine, or nine and ten?
I'm sorry, nine and ten, nine and ten, sorry. Nine and ten at the high school. That PO has been done. We need to have another PO, which we're waiting until the week two. So that's the good news, so we are going to roll out for freshmen and sophomore, one-to-one Chromebooks. That pretty much will be it for the district, unfortunately.
So no additional carts?
Not, not at this point in time, unfortunately. So that, and because of the timing of this, and not having the, these materials bought on July one, so they are not set up, we will probably not be in a position where they're actually in students' hands until October one.
And sort of related question, I was really upset to see Osiris's name on this list. I mean, that's a, that's a huge hole right there.
Hmm.
Big, big shoes to fill. What are the plans, what are we going for with that? Because we had looked for a third person, and we, we nixed that, we're done to two, and are we done to one now?
Well, for now.
Yikes.
We, we've already posted for somebody to try to fill those shoes, and I looked, there were four applications, there was, or five, there were two that looked interesting. So hopefully, next week, Brad, Sam, and I will get together and we'll start the process again.
Move quickly.
Yes.
Good luck with that one.
That's a loss.
That's a tough job to fill.
That's a big loss.
Yeah, it's, it's a very big job to fill, and we were lucky this time to find someone who could do the wires and plugs and the vision, and those people are very hard to find.
Absolutely, especially this time of year.
Are all the plugs?
It doesn't matter what time of year.
Is the wiring done? Most of the wiring?
Yes, the harbor network was in, finally configuring and teaching our technology department of one how to, how to manage the new switches. The last step is to set up the new sign-ins for all the buildings for the wireless, but the wire, the network was completed before the end of June, and now it's just tweaking and fine-tuning, so. So in fact, they did it so well that they only, a building was only down for half a day. So they put all the, all the stuff in, and then came in one day, plugged it all in, set it all up in each school, and that basically was it. So now it's making sure we have the training to support it and getting our, our access codes. We're still using the old access codes now, but eventually, that will go away, and you'll be on the faster network.
Great. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. This is our second public forum. Okay, going to school committee forum. Bill?
I just want to thank all the custodians, I know this is the toughest part of their, their year, and they always do an awesome job getting the buildings ready. It's probably the hardest, hardest part of the year, that they, they, there's a lot of sweat equity in, in the, in each building, and it goes on, so I just want to thank them, and I wish you guys a good opening.
And I would like to thank Osiris for the time he did give, it was very short, but it was definitely sweet. That's, those will be hard shoes to fill, but certainly moved this district forward in ways we haven't moved in, in many, many years. So he will be missed, and I hope that whoever comes in, comes in with the same energy and the same dedication, and we continue to move that forward.
Great.
I agree with Bill and Jane.
Okay, don't have anything, thank you.
Similar to what Jane said, Osiris obviously is a big, big job to refill, but there are a lot of other names, we got a, those at home, we got a list of all the resignations and retirements. We had a lot of talent slip out the side door, unfortunately, and I think a lot of that may have to do with, I mentioned this to Alan before, if I was a young teacher and I'm looking to build my career, Blackstone and Millville's been kind of a rocky road lately. So what happened is we did have a lot of really good, young teachers go out the door, because we just did not look like a stable district where they'd want to be long-term. It's too bad, some of these are great names on this list. You know, I hope we can be more stable next year, but I think everyone on this table knows that, so that's all.
Thanks. Tara?
Nothing to add.
Okay, our upcoming meeting, our next meeting is September eighth, and we will be talking about the FY fifteen audit report, and then after that is September twenty-second. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Georgia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good night.